Regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Let's have everyone turn off, or at least silence your cell phones, please. And then we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. Do either of the commissioners present have any issues with the agenda as it stands?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Alright, I'll second that. To a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Community information items. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and start with this. Uh, two things that I think every year probably come up. This time that really starts to weigh heavily on me is, um, don't feed the bears. We, my neighborhood got absolutely obliterated by some hungry feller in the last couple of nights and, uh, I still can't believe that people don't have locks on their trashcans. Um, it's, you know, in the twenty-six years I've been here, I've seen this be a continuous problem and it's pretty easily remedied and I just don't get it. It's, you can fabricate all manners of locking mechanisms for trashcans, whether even a simple ratchet strap around the whole thing would does it half the time at least and I just see continuous trashcans unsecured, left out, put out the night before. It drives me nuts, so. Anyone who's listening, and tell your friends, please, secure your trashcans against the bears. Secondly.
Me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if I may, the other thing I've heard lately is that CPW is starting to issue, um, tickets for not securing your trashcans if a bear comes in and they end up having to do something with that bear. They're citing people for attracting wildlife. So it's more than just keeping your vehicles clean and stuff, there's a potential that you could be targeted for that.
Oh, good, okay, so be aware, members of the public, everyone in the room, tell your friends, you might get a ticket if you don't freshen your game up a little bit on the bear can situation. Um, good to know. Remember like ten years ago, there was that story in the paper from the CPW guy who watched a bear basically progress from adolescence to adulthood? Ended up being the one, he had to be the one to put it down, was like brutal. Um, so let's avoid that. The other thing I wanna continuously impress upon everyone all summer long is, uh, wildfire preparedness and awareness and if you're camping, put your fires out. It's, it's still happening and that's another thing that, you know, in all the years I've lived here, I still can't believe there's people visiting and even locals who are out having fun and not putting the fires out completely and properly. Um, boggles the mind, so that's all I have for community information items this morning.
I have nothing to add, thanks.
Okay, alrighty. Next up, we wanna make sure everyone's aware that meeting recordings are available. Reminder that all regular meetings and now work sessions are recorded and available on the Lake County Government YouTube channel with transcribed and indexed videos. We've stepped this up in the last year a whole bunch. Um, the recordings can be watched at a time, excuse me, that's best for you. Subscribe to stay informed on county decisions. This time we will move into public comment. Public comment is available for residents wishing to speak on behalf of an agenda item or another issue not on the agenda. To make public comment, residents may request to speak by raising your hand in person, using the raise hand feature in Zoom, and/or sending a message in chat. The chair will call on public in order, comment is limited to three minutes, not including board questions. Action, if required, will be assigned to county staff. The chair may also ask that public comment on specific agenda items be held for later in the meeting. In certain instances, rarely, but it happens, public comment will not be accepted on items such as public hearing items and a few other rare cases noted on the agenda. Um, so let's go ahead and start with public comment, anyone in the room? Pete?
Yeah, Peter Day, twenty-seven Bailey Drive. Um, I wanna comment specifically on agenda item number four when it, when it comes up, the commercial recreation permit for, for e-bikes. But I'd like to take, and I hope that will be allowed, um, but I'd like to take, you know, this opportunity in public comment to talk, you know, generally about, uh, you know, the framework for commercial recreation permits, especially ordinance twenty-four dash zero one. You know, I see this room, the only institutional knowledge for the, that ordinance, I believe, is Chris. You know, nobody else? I don't think Melissa was in the position.
Well, she does not.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, you know, I made extensive comments then on the, on the ordinance. I thought it was, you know, not concise and poorly written and, and not comprehensive. I had, I had a bunch of problems with it. There were a lot of definitions that, you know, there was a definition that he didn't seem to definition farther on in the, in the, um, in the document, there were a lot of, um, um, I think, different, different names for the same thing. So I thought it was, you know, not a very, a very good, good ordinance to begin with and I, and I think that, that that ordinance doesn't, you know, doesn't serve well. Um, if the ordinance was, you know, kind of informally named the OHV ordinance and that's, there was two years of discussion, um, in the public con, in public comment and it was all directed towards OHVs and snowmobiles. Um, there was no consideration that I can remember of, of e-bikes, of, of, um, you know, foot recreation, bicycles or anything like that, it was focused on, on OHVs and, uh, and snowmobiles. And so I think the ordinance twenty-four oh one is an imperfect document to be considering, um, you know, other types of permits for permits other than for OHVs and, um, and snowmobiles. And I think that, that, um, I guess I'll just, um, you know, maybe, maybe leave it at that, that, you know, the, the ordinance doesn't, doesn't address those other uses, foot, horseback, bicycling, bike, you know, motorcycle, um, trucks, automobile, stuff like that. Um, and so I think that the ordinance, you know, should be reopened to have a section that deals with, you know, uses other than for, for OHVs and snowmobiles. And right now I just don't see that, that, um, the ordinance addresses it. In fact, um, you know, for the requirement for a commercial recreation permit, you know, that's in section three underneath commercial users, which, you know, are, are defined specifically as for OHVs and, um, and snowmobiles. So I don't think that, you know, conclusion that, that the ordinance is, uh, you know, is, is really, as currently written, you know, is gonna properly, um, um, address, um, a permit for, you know, for other types of, of transportation.
Okay, thanks Pete, we'll take that into consideration. Yes, state your name and.
Oh, sorry, thank you. My name is Shannon Grant, one twenty-six West Seventh Street in Leadville, and I also wanna speak on the e-bikes and I would like to do so at that time. So I think I'm just asking permission to hold my public comment until that matter is discussed.
I think that would make sense to me.
Okay, alright, we'll allow time for public comment when we get to that agenda item. Okay, anyone else in the room? Okay, do we have anyone online? Okay, we see Max Hanson up there.
Who's hi, my na, I'm sorry.
How you doing? Go ahead, Max, state your name and where you're from.
Yep, uh, so my name is Max Hanson, I am the constituent service representative for Congresswoman Brittany Pedersen. Um, while I'm not constituent or a resident, I was hoping I could just provide under three-minute brief update, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome, thank you so much. Um, so obviously about two weeks ago, um, administration signed the, uh, one BB, the funding bill, um, for, you know, federal government and everything. Um, Congresswoman was a no vote on that, so I wanted to provide, you know, that, uh, context. Congresswoman's very concerned about what that's going to do for our local communities, particularly, uh, when it comes to rural areas, uh, and the changes to Medicaid, uh, and SNAP benefits, um, for our communities. Um, two, uh, back in February, the Congresswoman did sponsor a bill, um, that was, would reauthorize the secure rural schools funding. Um, this is funding that comes into, uh, the United States Forest Service through permitting fees and then typically goes back to counties, um, typically for transportation and school districts. Um, I believe for Lake County, that's approximately a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, as of now, that funding has still not been reauthorized. There has been a companion bill that did pass the Senate, um, so we are hoping that will be taken up again, uh, in the House. As I mentioned, the Congresswoman did sponsor a bill back in February that would reauthorize those funds, um, across the country. Um, two, last week, the Congresswoman did, uh, submit a congressional project fund application uh, for Bright Start Early Learning, uh, there in Leadville. That was approximately two million dollars to help construct a new childcare facility in the community. So the Congresswoman's very, uh, excited about the possibility of that getting approved, um, through the House and what that means for the residents there. Um, outside of that, I just wanted to make it known that our office is available for any residents who are having issues with any federal agencies, whether it be IRS and tax returns, State Department for Passports, Social Security Office. Um, we do have resources available and can help, um, community members, you know, navigate that process with those federal agencies, so we are a resource. Um, other than that, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
That's all great, thanks Max, um, I do not have any questions.
No, do I? Thank you, Max.
Yeah, I wanna thank you and, uh, uh, Ms. Pedersen for all the hard work you guys are doing to help Lake County.
Thank you, I'll relay that.
Alright, uh, anyone else online? Anyone else in the room? Okay. I think that will conclude public comment for today's regular meeting. We'll move on to agenda item number one, which is calendar work session and regular agenda review led by Executive Administrative Assistant Sandra Pettis.
Thank you. Go ahead and start with, uh, calendar review for next week. I do believe that's a late week, it's not just for. Okay. Uh, we've got nothing so far on the twenty-first. Um, on the twenty-second, you have your morning, uh, work session from nine to noon and your afternoon work session from one to four. Um, just to note though, we currently do not have anything scheduled for either of these, so, um, I will keep in touch with Candace and, um, if something pops up, great. If not, just might get canceled. Unless there's anything that you guys would like to put on there, just reach out to Candace and we'll, we'll get it scheduled. Okay?
Yeah.
Um, the twenty-third, community coffee is from eight-thirty to ten. Uh, Lake County Emergency Services Council is from ten to eleven-thirty. And then you do have, um, something on this work session from ten-thirty to twelve. This will be the discussion with, um, uh, overview discussion and a little bit of training, I think, with DOLA.
For the budget, stuff they started, I hope you can talk to us.
Cool. Sweet.
Um, we currently have nothing on the twenty-fourth. And the twenty-fifth is, yep, just Twin Lakes Community Coffee.
Um, it's really weird, so you're saying on the twenty-second, both our work sessions are empty right now?
Kinda crazy, right?
It just seems really kinda weird, cause we kinda had so much going.
We did have a hold on one of them for, um, project, uh, group updates, but, um, Candace wants to talk with everybody first, so we just pushed that a little bit to, to early August.
Okay.
Yeah, so that one came off, but yeah, nothing's been scheduled for the afternoon.
Just some operational efficiency kinda changes and.
Yeah, that was something that Tim had had born, started doing with groups, but it feels like it wasn't very meaningful and just ended up being an extra meeting for staff where no one really felt that they were getting anything out of it.
Okay.
So we are meeting this Thursday for our normal, we have small group meetings for different departments to talk about how can we make those meetings more meaningful? What is the intent of them? Is it really a meeting that's needed? Essentially, they were meeting every week to review your priorities and talk about their work towards them.
Maybe not the best use of time.
But it was not, yeah, it wasn't very meaningful and I don't want to have meetings that are for nothing.
Makes sense, well.
So.
Really?
We have enough of them, really, uh, so unless it really has an intention, I don't wanna take time out of people's day to make up a reason to meet.
Okay. Alright, sounds good.
Wanna talk about grooming?
I would say do something, even if it's wrong, do some, do some jumping jumps, yeah.
Uh, so we can take a quick look at, uh, the twenty-third, since that's the only agenda we've got going, but like I said, it's just the, um, um, discussion, overview and training with DOLA, um, and Randy Snead will be here for that.
Great, I've got questions for those folks, so I'll refer right them down and bring them in.
Okay, and we can take a quick look at the draft for the following regular meeting on, uh, the fifth. I don't think there's a lot on there yet. Calendar session, regular meeting. Uh, discussion and consideration of a non-disclosure agreement between Lake County Office of Emergency Management and Axcel Energy.
Uh, that brings up a good question, is who's gonna lead that now?
That will be me.
All of your spare time and how many, how much room you still have on your plate?
Um, there will be a few more things that are going on the consent agenda, but right now is, uh, the retail liquor license renewal for Twin Lakes General Store, um, and then approval payroll, uh, accounts payable packets and, um, so far we have a special meeting, uh, minutes that's already been sent to you guys for review, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. You know, budget season is right on the horizon here, but this still feels like very, uh, very light.
We've kept the end of July and August a little less heavy on work sessions because I'm meeting with every single department to help them get started on their budgets.
Okay, well, thank you for your hard work.
Yes.
We're moving the needle in the right direction, I know that much.
And we, we're, we're finishing up finance director first round interviews right after this meeting and then we'll do second round and pick a person, but even so, that person won't be like ready to enroll and create an entire county budget, like, ooh, why?
Yeah, that is a learning curve.
So I'm gonna stop handling that till we get them on board at the end. Alright, that's it for me.
Great, um, okay, uh, agenda item number two. Discussion and consi, thank you Sandra.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Sandra.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Um, discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-five. Let's ring to it. Resolution of Lake County, Colorado approving the transfer of previously appropriated monies between funds or between spending agencies of Lake County, Colorado, and adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental and revised appropriations for Lake County, Colorado for the fiscal period, beginning on the first day of January twenty-twenty-five and ending on the last day of December twenty-twenty-five. This will be led by Candace Bryans, County Manager. Thank you Candace, I think we've had some really good conversations about this recently.
Yeah, so, um, in our, we did a work session recently that we went through each of the supplemental requests that, that we had. Um, I know that you guys asked some questions in that work session, but just circling back to if you have anything in there that you want me to re-discuss?
Nope, get those paving guys everything they need.
Yeah. And I double-checked it, Matt, they're on the resolution.
Oh, okay.
And the, and the document that will accept it's like third or fourth from the bottom.
Okay.
Um, I have no questions, we've already dived into this, I'm pretty happy with the work sessions.
Uh, I don't have any questions, Alex, thank you.
Okay, so, um, call for a motion?
Uh, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-five. Can I read it? A resolution of Lake County, Colorado approving the transfer of previously appropriated monies between funds or between spending agencies of Lake County, Colorado, adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental and revised appropriations for Lake County, Colorado for the fiscal period, beginning on the first day of January twenty-five and ending the last day of December twenty-twenty-five.
I will second that and to a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Next. Agenda item number three. Excuse me. Discussion and consideration of the adoption of a Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-six, amendment to the twenty-twenty-five certification of mill levy for Lake County, to be led by County Manager Candace Bryans. Thank you Candace.
So, um, at the last moment, uh, before the mills were adopted by the board, um, I was not involved in the actual meeting where this happened.
This was in December, right?
In December, um, we had shared the mill numbers and having not been part of that meeting, what I believe happened is, um, um,
go to close, sorry, go, you're fine? Online, that's okay. Alright, yeah, okay, there you go.
Um.
And the next one, sorry. Sorry, everybody, there you go.
Sorry.
So, let me try to zoom in here. Tim recalled, uh, having a mill credit and so, uh, those only happen on specific years. So he changed the mill that Finance gave him, the levies, and added a mill credit, which we confirmed with DOLA, it doesn't exist this year, um, which changed all of our numbers. This actually matches the mill certification that was certified and turned in to DOLA and it also matches the budget that we're actually using and created our entire budget off of. Um, because they thought they left on a mill credit, they changed it in the meeting and then didn't communicate to anyone actually building the budget or filing it with DOLA that they added a mill credit, which was wrong. They should never have added a mill credit, it doesn't exist for us this year.
Okay.
So this is amending our mills to match what we built the budget off of and what was actually submitted to DOLA, recorded and submitted to them, as we have to submit our mills in the review.
What are the, like, in basic verbiage, what changes are actually happening? Like, we, I know you just described it and it, and it, some of it went over my head, so.
So where you see these funds, there was a line that said mill credit and it allocated mills to a mill credit, which does, we don't, there is no mill credit this year.
It's not like a credit that's going back to taxpayers or like, this was just like,
It was just a mistake.
I don't even know what mill credit is, okay, okay.
On, on, people in the room didn't realize that there wasn't one through this actual year.
Okay.
Which Finance did, but Finance wasn't part of the meeting when they approved the mills, so it got changed without the input of.
Is it costing anyone more money or any?
No.
Okay.
This is legitimately what the budget built off of, what was submitted to DOLA.
So it's just an internal, to correct an internal error.
Not in the i's and crossing the t's.
Yes.
Fair enough, thank you for clarifying for me. Sometimes the language on these things is hard for me to grasp. Okay, um, I will call for a motion on agenda item three. Uh, motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-six and amendment to twenty-twenty-five certification of mill levies for Lake County.
I'll second the motion.
To a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Let it be known. Uh, agenda item number four. Discussion and consideration of land use file twenty-twenty-five dash twenty regarding a commercial recreation permit for the e-bike shop to operate on the route of the Silver Kings and the Turquoise Lake perimeter road. This will be led by Melissa Kendrick, Community Planning and Development Deputy Director. Um, thank you Melissa.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We ready?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Well, this, um, the morning, and this is the first, uh, commercial recreation permit. It's being issued under the ordinance that was described earlier. So, um, this is the applicant owns a business called Slap Events, also EB Shop Colorado, I don't know whether those names, it's located in Leadville. And the owner, Mike Matheson, is here with us this morning and I'm gonna have him describe really his business plan, kind of what the operations are about. Um, but he is applying to operate electric, electric bikers in Lake County and, um, he does have a temporary use permit as required by the City of Leadville to do that. So, um, I think what might work, well, let me, let me do it this way. Let's see, about the operations are helping to understand. So maybe I'll have Mike explaining, um, operations and then I can come back and how we review the criteria.
Okay, yeah, let's, uh, yeah, we'll start with just an overview and then we'll let these guys, um, present. Let Shannon talk and then follow up with planning. Okay.
And Pete, don't forget Pete.
Okay, um, go ahead, Mike, let's, let's see what you got here.
I'm Mike Matheson, I'm the owner of Slap Events LLC. We operate, uh, PBA under E-Bike Shop of Colorado and have a happy adventures. We are a EB-related business. To preface this, all of our net proceeds of our for-profit business goes to our nonprofit, All the Footsteps, that provides adaptive ski recreation, um, rafting, biking, canoeing, hiking and skiing in, uh, various counties in Colorado. We currently operate out of one-on-one Harrison. You can see our rental shop, rental trailers down at Two Mile Brewery and our tours lead from Moses Barbecue out one forty-four East Sixth Street. Our tours are legitimate tours, there's no more than four riders in a tour group. It's led by a guide, all of our guides are either EMT or Warford, uh, Wilderness Trained, uh, for emergencies. We have been operating in Leadville since two thousand eighteen and this is the first year we've ever needed a permit to ride our bikes on public streets. So we operate, used to operate three tours, we now operate two. We do the Trail of the Silver Kings, which is basically the auto route, um, around Trail of the Silver Kings up in the East Mighty District. And then we added Turquoise Lake this year, uh, doing a perimeter road around that. Each weekend between two and a half to three hours. We don't go off of public land on private property. Uh, we stay pretty much on all the public surfaces, uh, that we can. We also operate in Grand Junction, um, Colorado National Monument, Colorado River Trail. We operated Palisade on wide tours and we operate down south, uh, in EB. Uh in EB and Salina. We do the uh San Moles Ghost Town ride from EB and we do the business tunnels. We do the same from Salina, just a different type of route uh coming to to that. So that's pretty much our tour business. We also have in-house rentals, where people rent our bikes and give us some more.
So just uh for clarification in the room, I know basically what what it is, but the route of the Silver Kings and for anyone listening online is just east side up through Stromtown. Pretty much staying on dirt roads up there.
Yeah.
And then like Turquoise Perimeter Road, I guess with the e-bikes, it's not as hard for an average person to jump on a bike and do the full, what's that, twelve miles?
Eighteen miles total.
Eighteen miles around the whole Turquoise Road. What's it like mixing with the traffic there? Is there ever any sketchy turns or like?
So the next thing about um the Turquoise Recreation Area is that they have perimeter route, the perimeter roads and they have also the sub, the internal roads. So yeah, we stay on nine C uh Route nine. Uh when you're on the north side, there's very few cars. Uh the biggest thing that we have, we stop and watch is the lobby uh up there. Um but when you're on the north side, the only time the roads get any type of business is when we're just coming up to the Sugarloaf Dam. That's when when people are going into the dock fish, where they're heading up to Haverly Pass, where they're heading to the campgrounds. Once we're past the main campgrounds, um the roads are pretty much non-existent. I've been out there and there's maybe more or fewer cars pass us. It's similar to the Colorado National Monument. It's all one lane traffic for us, one lane rides and car to car is kind of full of other bikes, so.
Do you uh, so you've been operating these tours in Lake County without a permit for the last three years? Is that what you said? And also do you operate in the other areas without a permit?
No, we operate, uh there was no requirement for us to have a permit up until till like June one of this year. So we have our local business license and we've been on public roads since two thousand eighteen.
And do the other areas where you operate require a permit?
Oh yes, uh I have a national park permit uh issued by the car, uh the National Park Service. It was part of our national monument. I also have the CPW permit that operate. Approves my operation in and on the Colorado River Trail, which basically runs from Loma, Colorado to Palisade. I also have at Grand Junction, last couple of this park permit to operate inside their park system. Uh down in EB, I have business licenses to operate. Uh this, running an e-bike business is a permit-driven business. So um everybody has a little different process uh for that.
And were you running tours on the Mural Belt Trail for the last two years?
Yes, we have.
Guided tours?
Guided tours.
Um is there anything you want to add to this, Shannon?
I was just gonna say that. Mike's passion is in sharing the love of our community, just like we all have. We're sitting here, we we do this work. He's worked hard to uh to learn the history and to be able to share that and to be stewards of our assets in terms of that. I was thinking about um as I was hiking up uh off of Seventh, way up off of Seventh Street yesterday and up at Ball Mountain this morning. Thinking about all of the thousands of people that were up there uh over the weekend and thinking that um while I'm not. Saying anything negative at all, I'm just saying that Mike's business is about sharing that history and sharing and. And I think about what people who were here over the weekend have no idea what they were riding through, walking through, seeing it. And that his passion is in sharing that and also giving back to our community um using these county assets, so.
May I point out a couple of things? We have about thirty tour companies that aren't based in Lake County that operate in Lake County. That provide tour services inside our county on the exact same roads and services that I ride on. I'm the one that has applied to the permit. There are three other local companies that are going through the permit process. This is a much bigger. Alien mechanic I think realized. You have hiking tours, full coach bus tours that operate in the East Mighty District. And you have four people that have applied for permits. So that's, it concerns me that I've, I've accepted the burden and to go through the permitting process. We have all these out county individuals that have no idea that this process maybe means this.
There's a pretty massive gray area at the state level on what people are allowed to do on our county roads. That, you know, we've kind of identified. Getting things buttoned up at a state level presents a whole new level of challenges. Not that we're not looking at it. Or looking at, you know, what our avenues and what our options are. But um this is that, to fix that's gonna require something to change at the state level because it's, right now it's kind of a free-for-all. As best as I can see by the information I've I've looked at.
Right, this this party, people that are leading guided hikes from our trailheads would be required to have this permit. And I know for a fact that they don't even know this process and they're Lake County businesses. They don't even know the process exists uh for it.
Going back, I wanted to add, Mr. Bulley, that you had asked the question about doing these things beforehand and it's your first start. Is that that Mike has put a lot of effort, time and energy into to building this business. And hired local people to work with him beforehand so that he could do all of these things. Contributing to our local economy in a in-house way as well as celebrating what we all want to celebrate in our community. So I think I just, I missed adding that into my public comment, that it's a shame that things have been held up and that. These people had to actually find other jobs because he hasn't been able to offer them the work uh that. As of May thirtieth, we thought he was gonna be able to offer. That's been an unfortunate side effect of this permitting process.
Okay, that's this is.
Yeah. Okay, um that's. Yeah, I was just gonna make sure that they were all set and then we can sit back and say.
This permit is for county roads, it's not, it wouldn't um be applicable on trails. Um but if there, we certainly have enforcement in planning in the current um, we're in Planning and Development Department, so if we become aware. That there are operations, they are in violation of the ordinance. So whether or not on a state level, uncertain, we know there's some pending legislation that might help us strengthen things. But right now, if there's any commercial operations occurring on county roads um that are not under the commercial permit, they are in violation of the ordinance. Um whether that be motorized or non-motorized. So if we become aware of these things, then we can take, we can afford and enforce them.
Same point from me at that. But it does require, we are always completely driven and um enforcement. And so if we become aware of these, we have found some that we work through. The whole process came because of the uptick in the amount of helping and guiding that was occurring without any kind of oversight. So some of these have been brought into compliance and 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 we are here and available, so I would encourage you to um. Know of operations that are operating right now on county roads. Um that are implemented or or truckloads are coming up, even having enforcement and the ordinance itself.
So you're, you're asking the public or a small business provider that uses multiple businesses in town. To enforce the rules of the law. I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be, it's not what you're saying.
No, that's not what she's saying.
And that would, that, that would devastate several county businesses.
This, that sounds, it's, it's the re, the reporting, right? Not enforcing.
You're not enforcing. You're simply bringing it, making us aware that this is happening and um and then.
I'm harming small businesses in town. If you're turning in one small business to turn in another small business, you're just harming all the small businesses in town. I think that whatever your reporting mechanism is or whatever your enforcement mechanism, they literally just have to stand outside the county, they want the rest of mine. Or the ATVs drive by, leaving them in force there, so.
It seems, I mean, we can't have it all, you know, like we can't just let everyone who wants to. Do what they like without any kind of guidelines. So I think if we experience severe overuse on the east side, that's also gonna negatively affect local businesses.
One hundred percent correct, Commissioner. That's what we call destination stewardship. And that's the reason it's so important to have guided operations that are permitted. I'm not against the permitting process. I'm against me being the one to ask to report violations to.
There's no requirement.
No, we're actively, we are also actively, the department is actively planning these operations. But I, we're just asking those good stewards, if you're aware, that someone hasn't gone through the app, the the appropriate permitting process. If you bring that to our attention and we have the ability to be more efficient and in more proactive in these. Either under permitted, motorized, obviously it's restricted, you know, you have um for them, they'll get parking out of it, but not motorized. We want to make sure that they're safe, that they're in the process, so we're just asking for um if you, you're actively looking for these operations as well as the department. But um you're out of, you're out there, we're just asking you to steward and and share that information as the leading enforcement.
Sort of like it takes a village. We can, we, I'd love to be able to hire, you know, um. Folks to go up there and make sure no one's, you know, doing the wrong things on private property and tearing stuff up or, you know, trampling sensitive areas, but. You know, unfortunately with our budget, we've only got so much. So if there's anyone who can lend us a hand with just the informational aspect, hey, this is going on up here. It's not, you know, not kosher. We could always use a hand, so it does take a village. Um what else do we have from planning?
Right, um yeah, I can kind of wrap up this part of the the presentation. Um there are standards established that um from the ordinance that we're talking about and I listed those in a lot of detail in the staff report. I think one of the important ones is that commercial motorized use shall not be or any commercial use should not be permitted on our main collector roads, which include County Road. Four and seventeen and Harrison now. And um Mike is aware of that and and you know, bringing to mind those uh that that standard.
Um there is one section on County Four we can't get past, and that's uh County Four, like what's called Forest on there. Like in uh, like in your first lake property. I would kind of report that and then it turns into County Road nine.
Yeah.
We have to be on that small section.
Take the junction and.
We can, you can come in, uh that puts you on seventeen, so you have to wander through the neighborhoods again.
Yeah, I mean, you, they can't, they can't, you're contributing, you're not contributing at the junction, you're no one from there.
Yeah.
So there, the order stipulates that's something to look after the road. Um we, uh our suggestion was, was.
What's on?
Carry, ooh, just stay on carry right now.
What was your suggestion then?
Just the junction's available for um coordination and maybe maybe even stage removal, stage removal.
The uh Leadville Junction area experiences overcrowding, but that's only during the winter time, is that?
Summer, right. Summer's gonna be active too, but late July is when we have to compete.
Okay, but as it stands right now, there's room to do staging out of there.
Yeah, so that, that's one of the standards. We did send this out on the furl, um specifically to the Office of Emergency Management. To um fire public works in the sheriff's department. There are no real concerns raised, sheriff worked a little, or I mean a um firework with Mike. Um thinking through the issue of batteries of fire now, like the, the possibility of creating a fire from a battery. So he's satisfied with how um the operation is is designed at this point in time. So there are also approval criteria, there are five of them. I'm gonna detail these in the staff report. Um you know, kind of really following a lot of this conversation, I would say, the the first one involves um public health safety and welfare. Again, we're really trying to um protect important assets to the, to the community. And um these are really small operations, you know, four people or so, four to six people and two tours a day. So we believe that the impact of these are fair, are small. And again, our emergency providers are not concerned about their ability to address issues that we're having.
Good to know.
And that kind of fits with number two in terms of overly intensive use of county roads. As well as traffic congestion, you know, these obviously are not creating um a lot of impact on the roads in the long term. And the fourth one involves emergency management plan that the applicant does and has been reviewed by those agencies. So um and Mike described kind of how his tour guides are uh trained in order to manage tour people that are in their tours. So and we didn't identify any natural manmade hazards as number five. So again, um we believe that any application does comply with five criteria that are necessary for. To recommend an approval of the application. I have listed two conditions of approval. Um I will add a third one to that based upon the permit. And that simply is to. Kind of memorialize the routes, the two routes that we have described. So the operation would be um, you know, Lake County, full excuse of the kind of roads. On the following two routes, the route of Silver King to the east side mining district and the Turquoise Lake route. So with that, I can answer any questions if you want.
Um you know, I do, I have. Two questions um for the operators. Uh you, you said that um your staff is Wolfher and first aid or EM?
Some of them are EMT, some of them are Warfer.
Okay, is there, so you're saying some of them, um does that mean that like there's, it kind of mixes and matches or does it, will every tour?
That one has the EMT, all of them have the Warfer, and then everybody has to be CPR and AED trained.
Cool, so we have first aid training on every, okay.
As required by the national parks for us.
Cool.
So and we maintain that every year.
Okay, the next thing, this is a really tricky one because I've seen the evolution of the equipment and. When we say e-bikes, you know, at this stage, we've got a pretty massive spread of what constitutes as an e-bike. Um so I don't know how well the state or federal or anyone's even starting to putting definitions on these.
There's definitely guidelines. So uh in state Colorado, to operate on uh any type of trails, like a bicycle trail, the state of Colorado has approved. Class one and class two bikes that are seven hundred and fifty watts below or twenty miles an hour below. And that means the motor stops working when the bike reaches twenty miles an hour. The bike doesn't stop going faster. The motor stops generating energy at twenty miles an hour.
Okay.
Class ones and class twos in state of Colorado are considered bicycles.
Okay.
And they can go on pretty much all trails.
Okay.
There are a few cities, uh Boulder has some class one trails, Hanson class two trails, Colorado Springs does the same thing. They have class one and class two trails. The National Park Service, depending on which park we're in or the BLM or US Forest Service, they operate based on ranger district or park. And they have class ones and class two trails or they have just a multi-use trail uh for them. We only use class ones and class two bikes because they do all the UL certifications and they help us get into all the different parts that we. Bike into, providing experiments.
Okay, cool. Thank you for that clarification because.
They're listed in my permit to, uh, application that can only use class, uh, class two bikes.
Okay, cool. Then there's some e-bikes get up to like Stark Vards and KTM Free Rides and they're like full on.
Yeah, those are class threes and they're actually, the state's working on starting to acquire license, possible license for all those, so.
Cool, alright, well, thank you for clarifying that. Um the routes, if we're not talking about the mineral belt, then um. The routes are pretty clear to me.
At class two, you don't have to pedal. It's got a throttle.
Class twos, you do have to pedal for the pedal assist work. The throttle only engages if you use the throttle and it only takes the bike up to PSA five. For a brief moment, but a class two bike still have to be pedaled because they're pedal assist bikes.
Class one, you have to pedal?
Class ones are a pedal assist and even some class ones now can have throttle from them.
Does our ordinance cover any classes of e-bikes? The, well.
No, we just consider like these particular class plan to non-motorized, so we just, um, so they, they call them non-motorized. Part of our, like.
Because motorized is self-propelled, right? Because motorized is self-propelled, right? So these do have to pedal.
There's an element of pedaling involved, at least, okay.
Yes, I'll just say a quick question.
Yeah.
I applaud the Emergency Management Plan, and I think it'd just be beneficial to, for the, to explain in those areas where there's no cell reception, you know, a lot of times, you know, like one, for emergency access, but with your train professionals, how do you cover, you've got a lot of area around the lake that you don't have a cell reception. So what's your protocol for emergencies in those dead zones?
So we have satellite phones on our bikes, and our bikes are all GPS. And we have checking points for our tours. So as they move through the tours, they have to check in with us. We have specific checkpoints, and we have specific times, we do have a range of times when they can check in. They will call in ten forty-six, that they're at this location. Because we get slower riders, we get faster riders. So there's usually about a fifteen and twenty minute window for their check-in times. If they don't check in, then we can ping the GPS and see if there's an issue. If there's no issue, then we can ping them and they can give us an update.
And that's a live on the scene, the guides can check where their bikes are. So I was wondering how, I've done guiding work on, you know, permitted with the state to do single track moto guiding. We always have a sweep and a lead. So we know no one's getting left behind, if someone crashes hard, you know, you know, the sweep's gonna pick it up and radio up.
Our guy, our groups are so small.
Yeah.
Four people and one professional guide, we, we move as a group, we move as a unit.
Okay.
We don't do a lot of mixed groups. Groups are usually twos and fours of families traveling together, couples traveling together, we don't have a lot of mixed groups in that. So, but the GPS on the bikes pretty much keeps us. If we see it stagnant somewhere, then we can dispatch our truck with crew on it. So, Latin it's battery issue. The biker has exhausted themselves out of a battery, and they're just sitting there waiting for us to bring them their battery. So, and our guides do carry batteries now. So if we have a group of four go out, we carry two batteries. Because there's usually two strong riders in the group with two non-strong riders.
Tubes, tubes, tires, flat, flats are always the biggest.
When you open up our guide kit, we look like we're prepared for an over, a two-week overnight. Our bit, operation, we have food, water, tubes, tires, air, medical. Eventually, we'll have AEDs on our bikes.
Oh, wow.
Just waiting for the technology to catch up where they, the ADD gets too chipped old right now on the bike. So we're waiting for something a little better fox for that. This is about experience, so you go at that, you go at the speed of your question.
Any other questions from staff? Want to finish your bullet?
No, I'll save my comments for later.
Okay, um, uh, yeah, go ahead, Pete.
I have, you know, several, several different types of comments. You know, the first one is that, as Melissa said, this is the first time a commercial recreation permit has come, come for you. And I would have, would have thought that there might have been a little more, you know, public exposure to this. You know, the only time, place it showed up was in the agenda for your meeting today that was issued last Friday at two thirty. I saw the item, and then emailed Sandra asking for the, for the packet, which I got late yesterday afternoon. You know, I'm surprised that there aren't any, you know, I just don't know who knows about this. You know, this, this permit decision coming, coming today. I would have thought that the, you know, the outfitters, the OHB outfitters might have had an interest in this and might have shown up. I have no idea whether they, they know anything about this. So I think that there wasn't, there wasn't much public notice for this at all. The CPD website for land use has been down for at least ten days. So usually the files are posted there, and maybe just to the public, I don't know. Maybe you can see it internally, but, but, you know, there was no way I could go and look at the, look at the file on the CPD website. I even searched, you know, Lake County website for file number twenty-five, whatever it is, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twenty, came up with no hits. So, you know, so the information really wasn't available, and I didn't get any, even though I specifically asked for it. And that's no fault of anybody else until tomorrow afternoon. So I haven't even had time, you know, to consider this carefully. So I guess my suggestion on that is that, that you would, you know, defer a decision, maybe have a work session on, you know, this whole business about multi-use permitting. And, you know, have that before you make a, make a decision on this, on this permit. That's all in the spirit of government transparency, which I know that, that, that the whole VOCC is, is, is behind. So again, you know, I, I know that there are reasons that the CPD website is, you know, is not active. You know, it has to do with state requirements and stuff, but, but still, you know, the information isn't available. Now, specifically to the, you know, permit itself, you know, I was, I was involved, I probably went to all of the public meetings and commissioner sessions and work sessions, you know, dealing with ordinance twenty-four dash zero one. Like I said before, I made extensive comments. You know, so, you know, so I think I have a pretty good, good feel about things. I made comments even on the, on the commercial recreation permit application. My first comment looks like it's been answered, that there is complete phone coverage, you know, over the, over the, the whole pathway because you're using satellite phones, and that's great. You might consider putting that as a, as a condition, that, that cell cover, that some sort of coverage be maintained over the whole route. Safety, I didn't see any indication that helmets are required for, for all of the riders. You know, I think that'd be, you know, for the safety of the, of the tour participants. You know, maybe you could have a condition that requires that they, they, you know, they wear helmets. There is a requirement in the, in the application, you know, deal with, with bathroom facilities. And basically applicant, you know, has just said, well, if we, if we need, you know, if we need a facility, we'll, we'll find one. But I actually don't know where those, where those are. They're running around, around Turquoise Lake. If you were to duck into the, to a Forest Service campground and use the facilities there, I think you require probably a Forest Service permit to, you know, to access their roads and their, and their facilities. So I think the applicant should, should specify where the, you know, where the restrooms that they're gonna utilize are located, either private or, 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 or government, and, and get the proper permissions to, you know, to use those, either from the private, the private owners or the, or the Forest Service or anybody else. The permanent application requires a parking plan, I didn't see any, any indication of, of parking, you know, of, of a parking plan. There was just no mention of it, whether one was needed, whether it wasn't needed, where it would be. So I think that the application's not complete until there's a parking, a parking plan. As Melissa noted, there's no commercial motorized use permitted on County Road four. You know, that's in the, in the ordinance itself, I think that needs to be considered. Now, there's no definition of motorized used either. I don't, you know, I don't know whether an e-bike qualifies for motorized used, and would even, you know, this would even be applicable to that. But I think that's something that needs to be teased out, maybe in a work session. And then approval criteria, approval criteria number five has to do with, with hazards. And a hazard mitigation plan is required as part of the, the permit application. Permit application specifically calls out considerations of roadway and shoulder damage. I don't know the last time that any of you have been around Turquoise Lake, but that, you know, that road is, you know, in pretty bad condition. And in fact, there's one place where there are Jersey barriers, you know, on either end of a, of a slide that's taking the roadway down to the, down to the lake. So, you know, the applicant, at least in the staff report, you know, the applicant somehow, you know, was associating natural and manmade hazards to, you know, to, to alleviate no trace experience. I don't see how those, those relate at all. County staff says there, there are no natural or manmade hazards that have been identified. I believe that's flatly not true. You know, the roadway itself and the shoulders, you know, have, you know, have big chunks taken out of them. Again, there are those Jersey barriers that take the, the road down to a one-laying road, you know, that both directions have to pass. You know, I participated in a lot of Ride the Rockies rides, and, and what they would do is they go and mark the hazards with, you know, with paint so people could, you know, could see them. So, so I think that the, you know, the, the, the contention that there are no natural or manmade hazards, at least on the Turquoise Lake Road, is flatly, flatly untrue. I think there, you know, there are a lot of hazards, and the, the experience that people, you know, need to have to, you know, take these tours is relatively, relatively small, and you need to be able to balance and to pedal. I think any of us who've ridden around the Turquoise Lake Road knows that for bicycles, you know, it's not a casual experience. The hills are, the hills are steep, and, you know, I just, I just see problems with, you know, with the hazards that exist on that road, you know, being a, a safety hazard for the, for the participants, unless the hazards, some of them marked, are mitigated. So I don't think that approval criteria number five has been enough. That's my comment.
All right, thanks, Pete, I appreciate all that. You know, I think when Melissa said that this has been vetted by the sheriff's department, the fire department, Mike Irwin, that gives me a little bit of peace of mind with that in regards to some of those safety concerns, you know. It does sound to me like the applicant does have some good training on the staff to handle things on the scene in the immediate situation. And, you know, you take a risk every time you walk out your front door, you know, so I'm sort of like, there's no way we can eliminate all the risks. But I do think, you know, for me personally, I think I like to lean on staff's expertise with this. And, you know, when Melissa mentioned that it's been vetted by those staff members, I think if any of those things were serious concerns, they probably would have mentioned something. That's just, you know, what I'm hearing and in my own personal observations with this. Yeah, so.
My staff just, I'm sorry, I wanted to clarify too. Just, just so that everyone in the room is aware, these are, the commercial roadway permits do not have a, a notice requirement to them like a land use application. So they are very similar to the process, it's very similar to a special implement, where we do refer to everyone that's on the application, but there are not notice requirements within the process, the ordinance, or within the application. So, yeah, I completely could understand that in expectation of thinking that it would follow the same as a land use application and where we have, had by notice requirements, the commercial recreation permit doesn't have that public notice requirement. It just that it gets referred to all of the different agencies.
Yeah, we did check in with the county attorney to make sure that there wasn't anything we were doing wrong with the approval of this during today's.
Oh, I didn't say you were doing anything wrong, I'm just saying it's not very, it's not very obvious.
It's not perfect. What, what gives me a little bit of peace of mind on this is that we're kind of, you know, looking at, working with an imperfect process on something that's pretty small to start out with. You know, from what I'm hearing, it's two groups of four max a day.
Eight people a day.
Eight people a day total. So if there's something that we're like, oh, wow, this is a really, we, we could improve this moving forward, then, you know, we can look at that. We're not diet, you know, we're not jumping in the deep end, so to speak, with, with, I think, this specific situation.
Maybe you are, this is, since this is the first permit, you know, it is potentially precedent setting. So if there's no requirement to specify, you know, bathrooms for this permit, then I don't think you could expect other applicants to, you know, to, you know, to do that either. So, so I think you need to be careful about, about, you know, making sure that the applicant has met all the requirements in the permit application.
Great, okay, thanks, Pete. How often are these for renewal?
Annually.
Annually, okay, so that's a chance to make adjustments if something is not right, you know. Yeah, the bathroom thing, I could have some questions there.
The nice thing about using the junction is I believe that we have porta-potties at the junction, so, and with some guidance. And, you know, if you've got a guy with four people, I don't think that you had a prefer, a benchmark for a service to pop in and use a facility, to go down out of, of users, but.
Next question is very useful. If I need the bathroom, I may prefer to use May Queen because they have, that is the largest. That's also the best access, safest access for walking to them, so we can duck in there. We also have commercial bathrooms where we leave from, Two Mile Brewery lets us use the bathrooms, Moles lets us use the bathrooms. We're out on the road two and a half hours.
Yeah.
So.
Throw a few bag bags in the, in the kit, just in case.
It's probably one thing I don't, I haven't had to just clean up, I don't care for land issues.
Um, in the, in, you know, with the knowledge that these are annual, I don't have any other major concerns. I think it's more of like a, you know, we'll learn, move forward and learn and figure out how to perfect this process together as a, as a town, as a community. Take in input from everybody, you know. Let you finish your bullet.
Well, I've got a few comments. The first one is that you've been operating in the county and on our Mineral Belt Trail without a permit, and didn't inquire about one. Everywhere else requires you to have a permit, and you can't just walk in and demand a permit. I don't think our ordinance covers e-bikes, so what's to stop somebody from saying, well, now I want to do twelve e-bikes out there? So it's already the middle of the summer, all this could have been probably taken care of. We could have amended ordinance twenty-four oh one to put some guidelines, there's so much gray area. We're using this toilet here, we talked to this guy, he said we could sneak in, duck into this toilet. So I really, you know, it's now, summer's halfway or more gone. So I really think that, I really think it's a slippery slope. And I think, what's to stop somebody from seeing this and going, oh, man, I could, you know, other than competition, which is great. And by the way, I think it's great giving people tours. I just, I don't like how it's all unfolded. And then protective of the Mineral Belt Trail.
Commissioner?
Let me finish, please. In fact, the Mineral Belt Trail Committee, we had a meeting, I'm on that committee, and we discussed this, and we all agreed that there should be no commercial guiding or commercialization of our Mineral Belt Trail. And so it's not for commercial use. There's some gray area used in County Road four, so there's all this gray area that sets a precedent. What's to stop the next person coming and saying, oh, you let those guys, you let those guys walk in this gray area, and why aren't you gonna let me? So it's gonna create more work. I'd like to know more about it, and I think, you know, considering that it's so late in the summer, and, you know, there's a lot to consider, including the fact that you were advertising without a permit and running these tours, I, I just really feel like, I don't want to just say, oh, okay, well, he came in first, demanded his permit, so let's just give him a permit because it sets a precedent. I think we need to stop and maybe table this and amend our code, because what's to stop the next class of e-bikes? And I don't know how many classes are, but they've, they're throttled, they have motors. Just because you have to make a little movement with your feet, it still has a motor. So what's to stop class three or class four or whatever class? You know, there's, the ordinance doesn't address any of that, it just doesn't address this. So, so those are my comments, and I have more, but I'll, I'll save them for later.
I think with the, the permit that's been presented to us, if this included the Mineral Belt, we'd be having a much different conversation, I, I think.
That wasn't the only place that was advertised, there was also some lake and some private property.
So, Commissioner, that's, we were notified we were allowed to do that, we immediately stopped, and we adjusted our permit application for that. We're not asking to work on the Mineral Belt anymore.
But you were working on it for two years.
Up until that point, we, we were not required a permit, and no one had contacted us that we were required a permit because we had been doing it since two thousand and eighteen. Prior to you being a commissioner, we were operating in full view of everybody. The moment we were notified that we were not in compliance, we stopped. So I think it's, it's an unfair to say, hey, you're, you're asking for a permit and you were violating it. Up until the time we were notified, we weren't required to have a permit. 2018, I could be on the Mineral Belt, I could be at Turquoise Lake, I could be up in the mining district and there was no agency stopping us.
Not stopping you or not knowing that you're operating?
People have known we've been operating because that's how they notified us this year.
Which you never came in and inquired about permitting, even though that's required in all your other areas that you operate.
Back in 2018, I inquired and no one had, there was not a requirement for us at that time.
So there's still not really, it's still not really addressed in the ordinance, is it?
So the ordinance, I, I, the way that we interpret it and, and enforce it is that um, we follow the, e-bikes were evolving through all of this work. And so um, we've been able to determine that class one and two, or they're still commercial, so they're still required under the ordinance to have this permit. But they, they're not motorized because the ordinance did discontent or limits the ability for any motorized, additional motorized use on county roads. It only recognizes what has been preexisting. So if a new um, um, motorized e-bike, other classes that would be considered motorized, this ordinance would prevent them from being able to operate and make it on the county roads.
So we, we're not going to see anything above class one and two presented um, without serious, you know, a lot of work sessions and things of that nature. Uh, what, is there anything in place that will keep us from, you know, say there's competitors who roll into town and just like, hey, well, we want to do, you know, um, several 50 person, class one and two tours?
Those are the findings that are associated with this permit. Um, you know, that's one of the questions and one of the, the applications is what is the volume? What is the ratio of guides to participants? So within the findings, um, you know, are, are they posing some type of vehicular or pedestrian or um, threat to the roadways? And so that volume would potentially trigger the ability not to be able to make the finding that this were safe operations.
Yeah.
So the volume of um, the tours has always was, was certainly within the breadth of the scope of work and, and work sessions that were discussed. And so particularly, that is a kind of a key aspect of vetting through the application process, to look at what is, um, you know, what can safely be operated, what is that volume? And it takes into account what is the existing amount of trade use. So those things can all be vetted on a case by case basis, um, so that you can look at them individually. Whereas this one, the ratio is quite small, those large groups may not, may not go through the processes easily.
Okay, but this is the very first recreational permit application?
Yes.
So I just think it needs to be vetted more. I think we need to think about it a little bit before we jump into something and allow someone, you know, basically reward someone for operating without a permit for the last two years. And just, just give them a permit.
Conversely, it's like, are we going to punish someone for not, for, for us not having a real clearly defined set of criteria?
Well, it has to evolve, government has to evolve. It's our job to protect our assets and protect people from, you know, 25 tours. If you look at Moab, it's totally gone unregulated. And now people are leaving because they, they don't feel like, you know, that the land is theirs anymore, so.
Yeah.
I just feel like it needs to be, and I'm not against it, I'm not, I just feel like it needs maybe its own ordinance. And maybe it's, maybe the next guy wants to run 20, you know, skiers through the back country. Or, you know, it's just, it's the very first permit and it hasn't been.
We haven't done any backcountry ski guiding permits, nothing. I mean, this is completely across the board.
It almost needs its own.
This is specific to county roads. So um, any application guiding does require a conditional use permit if it's on land parcels or goes through trails that are, are on land. Um, but roadways are not zoned. That's why we have a commercial recreation permit for roads because they're unzoned areas. They're like right ways. Um, and so that's where this ordinance speaks to, is the roads out there in guidance, meaning like how you require conditional use permit. If they're based operations or the, the, they're using land parcels in the county. So those are all vetted through our land use process. This is just specific to county road use and guiding on county roads.
Why is County Road Four specifically excluded from use?
Through the work that we did, those are evacuation routes for our community. They're highly used roads, um, vehicular use. And so it was asked by the sheriff and by emergency management that we consider excluding 17 and four specifically um, as um, from guided tours, whether they be motorized or for commercial in nature just because those are major collector roads within the county, um, also evacuation routes for our community.
And so we're being asked to make an exception and?
No, we're wandering around. Uh, we, we make our way out of the County Road Nine.
But you stated earlier that you have a small section in County Road Four that you're going to.
And where the sign for turquoise lake is, the literal sign for turquoise recreation is, that's where County Road Four turns into Nine. So if we're on, at the recreational sign, we're technically on County Road Four. And that's the beginning of the recreation area.
Yes, Sugar Loaf Campground and the train tracks there heading up the hill.
Yeah, so right, right before you pass Sugar Loaf, County Road Four, when you get to the sign, changes to County Road. And then it turns into Nine C.
But we could suggest using the junction and avoid.
Yeah, we can avoid, we can go through the junction.
Avoid it.
And we can, people like to get a picture taken by the sign and then come backwards to it.
Down another, yeah.
Yeah, and then turn back around.
It sounds to me like, you know, we, we aren't at that threat, Moab threshold point yet. We've got to at least start doing some things where we can learn from this stuff. And this is a pretty low impact test run in my, in my eyes. Um, yeah, there's a lot of room for improvement on how we're doing this. This would have been great to have a like, you know, we need some kind of work session or another. Instead of having to do all this in a regular meeting where we gotta, you know, do all this due diligence on the spot. Um, but in the absence of a perfect process right now, I am, I feel like, my feeling is that it would be really prohibitive of local businesses to um, take a negative view on, on this and at least doing something. Um, I feel like the fault in this process lies in how we're handling it, not really anything that, that I can see wrong with this actual specific permit, which we'll get to revisit yearly to make changes.
We may have to revisit it next month when the next company comes in and then we say, okay, we don't, we still don't have a, a proper recreational ordinance, you know. We don't, we still don't have a proper process and so we're going to make another exception and then, so that's all I'm saying.
But are there any um, things that you might want to add as a condition to, you know, if there are items that are missing in this particular application? Um, or something that staff can, that we can work through in application or as a condition? The applicant can work with PD staff to perfect to kind of get there? Are there specific items?
With, with this specific permit, yeah, the Leadville Junction aspect seems like pretty common sense, fairly low hanging fruit. Um, and then throw a few wag bags in the, in the guide kit just in case of an emergency, a bad burrito or something, who knows? But um, you know, I, I don't have any other.
I think they should have written permission from the Forest Service to use their bathrooms.
You can get that.
That should be part of the application. The, the parking plan, there is no parking plan.
Doesn't your customers park at your?
Our customers park all over town and generally walk to us. So um, some of them park at Two Mile Brewery, some of them park in public parking. They all walk to us.
Yeah.
So I don't um, I don't um, have a parking plan because they're using public parking.
But the parking plan's required on the permit application, isn't it?
A parking plan is, is, um, you know, so I would say that if the operations are moved to one of the convening locations is the junction, then a condition of approval could be just a parking plan for, for the junction. If you're, if you're convening there, gathering there. And then if the other, when you do the ride of the Silver Kings, if that is congregating at a, a variety of different places, but it originates from Mose. And then goes, then you know, then could speak to that and that, and, and maybe that's the other.
And we have a temporary use permit in the city of Leadville, right? So this operation is really in the city of Leadville. So I think they, we have a signed, you know, agreement with them that, that what they're doing is acceptable in that location. So that, that was the reliance that I used in terms of where do these customers park. You know, I, I believe these regulations, this ordinance, while not perfect, is, does address this operation. We do define what these are and what they aren't. And we define where they can go, what they can do. And, and we have a section in here for specifically why they need to comply with these, this ordinance. And this ordinance wasn't adopted until 20, until, or 2024, right? So it, 2018, it, it didn't exist. And you know, the demand has risen so rapidly that, that obviously was why the county adopted this ordinance. So I, I do think while not perfect and we can refine it, we, we do have guidelines for what's being proposed today.
Okay, thank you Melissa. Anything else from, any other questions, concerns or comments that you want to?
No, I think I'm, I'm done.
Sorry, I lost my agenda again. Thank you, staff. Thank you guys for coming in. It was a un, unregular meeting style discussion, but I appreciate everything everyone had to add to that. And let's go official on agenda item number four. I'm going to make a motion to approve Land Use File 2025 dash 20 regarding a commercial recreation permit for the e-bike shop to operate on the route of the Silver Kings and Turquoise Lake perimeter road. With a couple conditions, um, that County Road Four be avoided um, by using Leadville Junction to stage out of when that is uh, if, if that's needed as staging area. Um, uh, add a couple wag bags to the, the kit and uh, everything else we've complied with, right? Any other conditions?
Written permission from the Forest Service to use their facilities, their restroom facilities.
Okay.
Parking plan as part of the permit.
That is already addressed via the city's.
Okay, sorry.
Parking, yeah.
I'll second the motion. On the condition, on the condition stated.
Okay. Do I need to restate those or did you get those?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, uh, to a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Right. Okay, take care of that. Um, thanks everyone for the thoughtful discussion and digging in. I know it's not easy, but you know.
You guys can work well, you can come and ride bike and do the routes.
Appreciate that. This is uh, how, how we perfect imperfect processes.
Most of my other partners have done that so they can experience it.
Great, appreciate the offer. Thank you. All right, thanks Melissa, thanks Anne. Thanks Mike, thanks Shannon. Okay, moving on, agenda item number five, County Manager Update, led by Candace Bryant. Thank you Candace.
Yeah. Um, so we've got just a few, few updates here. So the um, Department of Human Services, their fiscal year ended June 30th because they're on the state fiscal calendar. So they've received all but two of their allocations as of the 14th. Um, these allocations are for the Colorado Childcare Assistance Program, the child support. Um, even with the, the Beautiful Bill being passed, their state allocations are looking um, better than they expected this year with smaller reductions in child welfare and APS, which is Adult Protective Services, so that's great. Um, they have lost uh, one small grant, which that was part of that supplemental request. But other than that, it doesn't seem like this first year there's been two large cuts. Um, let's see here. Um, there's a lot of praise to go around for our staff. Economic Security Team for June was a hundred percent timely for SNAP and Medicaid applications. Which to explain that, they have to do a hundred percent time reporting. So if you spend two minutes on a case, it's got to report, be reported. One minute on a case, all of those have to be reported by case, which is a huge lift um, for that department. Um, just last year, they were only about fifty percent timely in that reporting and getting those cases reported and their, their time reporting done. Um, which a lot of our, our funding is based on if you get a reporting incorrectly. Um, Tourism and Economic Development, uh, we're moving forward with the Industrial Park Feasibility Study, um, which is being conducted uh, in collaboration with Johnson Economics and Meet and Hunt. We really want to figure out, is this airport project, does it still make sense with a slight change in location? I think there were some issues with the first location and the study was done quite some time ago. Um, so we are trying to make sure um, that we know what we're doing before we fully go forward with that project and spend any more time and resources on it. And we'll bring that report to you guys as soon as it's done. Um, Adam met with Reese Brown from the Cross Country Ski Area Association uh, to discuss opportunities for more cross-country skiing in Lake County. Um, Tourism, the Tourism Panel uh, is trying to fill three open Tourism Panel seats by August. Um, the Visit Leadville Twin Lakes um, will revise its 2025 to 2027 strategic plan this year to respond to economic and tourism landscape shifts that have occurred over the last 12 months. Uh, lodging and sales tax numbers have remained steady year over year through the beginning of July. Lake County, uh, Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue, um, uh, as Matt has kind of seen with me, we've gotten some heads ups that we, we've had resources requested from other fires. So we've sent some of those, uh, some of our trucks and humans out to support other areas. There are currently 60 fire cadets in the Fire Academy with the Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue and CMC groups, which is great. That opportunity to train at CMC in real life situations, get that training done and then move right into a working position is a great pipeline. We are still working on an IGA with CMC um, to draft a tower agreement, a land lease uh, to, to do some training out there. Um, Resources has been doing a lot of work. We launched a new um, review platform um, called Culture Amp. And so all of your one-on-one meetings and notes from one-on-one meetings are reported there. All of our staff can give input, so we're regularly getting feedback about how are we doing as management and directors. Um, it's also now uh, a more robust and digital platform to do reviews. So last year, when I came on, the reviews that we um, have been doing are, were paper, which is fine. Um, but really, it was just a one through five, how are you doing on five different areas? And it didn't actually give anywhere for directors to put feedback about how they were seeing that some, if you gave somebody a five, like what, what? they were seeing that some, if you gave somebody a five, like, why? If you gave somebody a one, give me examples of why you gave that person a one, because our merit increases. How we perform is tied to that review, which is great. We do want people to be performing well. But it needs to be, if it's tied to your merit increase, then I wanna be able to see, are you really, across the board, reviewing people all the same way? And if everyone's got fives, well, then I need to know why. So I'm really excited for this. This really gives us an actionable platform that I can see how directors are reviewing people. We can make sure it's fair and equitable and that we're really having true goals and specific outcomes that people have to achieve to, to get that merit increase. Um, so that's been really exciting. Um, we did an all-staff review, um, to know what we could improve and what we're doing great. Areas that we, uh, we scored favorably on is that people are proud to work for Lake County. Um, they know what they need to do to be successful in their role and they have access to learning and development to be able to do their job well. Questions where we really need to improve are that leaders at Lake County have communicated a vision that motivates me. We squirt really low in that, which is not shocking. We don't have a vision, a mission, or goals as a county other than the priorities you guys have set, which is crazy to me.
All, all over the place.
Yeah, well, I mean, just you guys will change often. And why people show up to work at the county, that should be a collective mission, vision to serve humans.
Yeah.
So we're working on developing that this year, so that's not shocking that we got that feedback. Um, we need to improve systems and processes. And then, um, the other area that we squirt low in is that leaders at Lake County keep people informed about what is happening in terms of changes, like operational changes. So that is definitely an area that we need to improve on. Also, not shocked to hear that. Um, but we want to be regularly having people give us feedback about what do we need to improve? How as a county manager do I need to improve? What do directors need to be working on and what are we really crushing it at? So I am super excited and proud of them because it was a huge lift to get that operational and rolled out in time for our performance reviews, which are happening this month. And we'll, uh, roll out on the April, or the August fifteenth paychecks. Uh, in terms of recruiting, we've got eight new hires, uh, and a promotion of Elena Mederos in Public Health to deputy director. Um, H R and Finance has been working together to clean up positional budgeting in Tyler. We've paid for positional budgeting, which allows us to click a few buttons and model payroll in different ways without having to do it manually in a spreadsheet, which opens us up to making errors. And we have paid for positional budgeting since we started Tyler and it has never worked, so I'm happy to report. Tyler may not like me, but positional budgeting works now, so I'm, I, we've done a ton of work to get that operating. Um, we've moved the payroll and benefits coordinator position into H R. We failed an M E, which is an audit from the state and, uh, D H S or got written up for not having our H R separate the person entering the hours and the person running the payroll separate. Um, I could write myself a really fat paycheck if I'm the person entering and the person paying out and then push it out to my banking account.
Even if you deserve it, it still's a lot of good process.
Still not, you know, a great thing to do. So we have separated those two operations so that the person doing the approving and pushing out the dollars is not the person entering hours or any of those kinds of things. Um, Community Justice, uh, has been doing work with language access consultants, um, for the last, uh, year. This was, uh, done through grant funding, uh, and the documents that this final report is being provided to us uh, gives valuable insights and recommendations, uh, for improving language justice across our county. Um, the diversest, there's a diversest grant that we had ended on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, the funding played a key role in expanding substance use disorder treatment capacity, especially for bilingual and underserved populations. Um, so that grant's wrapped up and that department is actively looking for new grant opportunities, um, to continue, uh, those services. The library, the summer reading program is underway and they have three hundred and twenty-four registrants. Um, since their six twenty-six kickoff, they posted sixteen programs, all of which have been well-attended. Um, where's here? The library is in the process of migrating, migrating digital collections into a new, uh, CMS, which is a, a tracking and management platform. Public Health, um, they are in the process of hiring a new environmental health, uh, specialist and have good applicants. They should be done with interviews by seven eighteen and make an offer on seven twenty-one because they've moved some people up, so it left a hold since we moved Kelsey up to director. Uh, currently, their funding is mostly stable. They're only gonna receive seventy-five percent of their public health emergency preparedness grant, but still could receive their remaining funds, um, depending on what shakes out federally in the next few months. This is only about ten K less than expected. They're also still awaiting notice of awards and contracts for about fifteen K of federal funds for immunization work and, uh, maternal and child health work. They're doing five immunization clinics at the library between July tenth and August fourth. And then C S U extension, um, so C S U extension is not, uh, a county-funded position, but we have, uh, an agreement with C S U to provide a small, a portion of that person's salary. Can't remember the exact percentage off the top of my head. Um, but C S U then offers free to the community classes for a whole host of things. And C S U has had a lot of turnover in that position, but Diana, who's with us now, is really great. She and I have been brainstorming what types of classes could we be offering? One that they're doing right now is, uh, a gardening class of how to grow your own food so that people have access to food. And I know that she's been working with C four on some, some ideas around that.
I think they're actively engaged with four-eight, local four-eight club as well.
Four-eight, and then a couple of ideas she and I have tossed around. And if you have ideas, please let me know because she's always saying, what, what kind of classes could I be doing? Is to do a little bit of, um, like, finance classes for people, personal finance.
Yes.
And then also, um, when we work towards tax season, one thing that I haven't seen, and unless you know what happens here, is a lot of communities have volunteers that'll help people file their taxes. And I don't know of anybody that does that, the senior, so if they do, yeah, the, what's it, Vito volunteers or whatever, come into the senior center. But it would be great. I think that'd be great for the whole community.
If it's able, you know, they can, kind of.
Is there any, uh, bilingual support in that program?
I don't know, but that's what she and I are gonna try to explore. Because I know that is a huge resource for a lot of people, just even, like, any business taxes, like, personal taxes. So we, we're trying to figure out a couple of other items that we can be offering. Um, she's doing a forestry academy in September for local landowners, uh, landowners. Talk about tree planting, uh, fire rise practices, plant insect disease, et cetera. So a few thoughts about opportunities we have to have C S U provide those kinds of classes for our community. Definitely let me know because she and I are trying to, are trying to come up with great ways and if we're gonna have this partnership that they're serving our community.
Yeah, did the most thanks for our buck.
That's all I have.
Good job, Candace. That's a lot to look at.
It is. Your lists of accomplishments never fail to impress.
Hey, that's not me, that's staff.
And staff, all staff.
That's all staff. I mean, the guys with the, those four hats that you wear.
Okay, great. Um, moving on, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second that and to a vote.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, um, all packet materials for agenda items are available upon request with the Lake County Administrator Sandra Pettis. You can find her email on county website. And to notify or subscribe to email or text notifications, please visit And with that, we will conclude today's regular meeting. The Lake County Board of County Commissioners, thank you, staff. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, anyone online attending.
Thank you, Chair. So good to have you back running the meetings.